Call this meeting to order. I guess we move into executive session. Bob, would you like to read that?
Sure, I move that we convene an executive session pursuant to 1 M R S A four oh five six F as Philbrook Fund trustees to discuss applications.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Here or none? All those in favor? Somebody make a motion to come out of executive session?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Do you, would you like to act on these now?
Yes.
And then go back to executive session?
That okay?
Okay.
Yeah. So for twenty twenty-one dash five, I move five hundred and eighty-nine dollars and twenty-one cents plus a referral to the Community Navigator.
As of December first?
As of December first.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Here or none? All those in favor?
And I move twenty twenty-one dash six as well.
Yes.
The motion on that is to turn it down.
Just a question, does Katie vote on these?
Oh.
Yeah.
She doesn't have them in front of her.
She doesn't have them in front of her.
So she's staying? She's just listening. Okay. Yeah. Sorry. Correct, Katie?
Whatever you want to do. I mean, I, at first when I think I agree with being five eighty-nine twenty-nine and the Community Navigator.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah.
I'm in agreement with that.
Yep, just what you said, you didn't have them in front of you. I just didn't want to have you make decisions that you had no, didn't see them in front of you, so.
So for twenty twenty-one dash six, the motion is to decline it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Here or none? All those in favor? How about you, Katie?
My hand is raised.
Good.
And for twenty twenty-one dash seven, again, the motion is to decline.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Here or none? All those in favor? Katie?
My hand is raised.
Okay.
And for twenty twenty-one dash eight, the motion is to table it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Here or none? All those in favor? Katie?
My hand is raised.
Okay.
We'll keep these then, right?
Give it to Daryl.
Whatever your pleasure.
Okay. These are done. You can take that back in a minute.
Now you can go back and move next.
Yep. So Bob, would you like to make a motion to go back into executive session?
Sure, to go into executive session under one M R S A four oh five six C to discuss acquisition of.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Here or none? All those in favor? Katie?
My hand is raised.
Okay. Call us, call us meeting to order. First on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, there's no presentations, no public hearings. Adjustments to the agenda? Do you have any, Bob? Julie?
I don't have any.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, move along. Citizens comments?
No, I haven't even thought of anything.
Stan here, good?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Um, I'm Dale Smith. Probably know, I live up on two twenty north, right by Violet Lane. Um, I'm here to let everybody know my displeasure with the dogs. I have some dogs out back that bark constantly. They're a definite nuisance. It's been going on for years. I'd just like to play a little tape of it. And it, and it doesn't matter what time of day it is. If it's two o'clock in the afternoon or two o'clock in the morning, if I get out of my truck or if I go out my door, the dogs are barking. Um, I know Julie's been working on a little bit of it for me. So I want to find, get this playing. Seven oh seven, just got back from a call. Got back from a call. Got out of my truck. And there they are. Is this still happening?
No.
Shoot. It's not one dog. There's at least seven of them.
Oh.
Um, I have even worse videos than that. And again, it doesn't matter what time. They're about three hundred feet from where I was recording that through the woods. Violet Lane runs up behind my house and the house is behind me about three hundred feet. It's a constant problem. I've been complaining about it now for years. And it goes hot and cold because in the summertime I'm at camp, so I'm not at home, so it's not as bad. But when I come home like now, it's terrible. I beg you to please help me do something with this. This is, it's terrible. It goes on all the time. And that's, that's one of them as well. Thanks.
They don't sound like chihuahuas.
No, they're all big dogs. They're like a Saint, it looks like a Saint Bernard mix. And then there's one that's a, I don't know if it's a full mastiff or a Great Dane. He's a big dog. She just got him just a little while ago. And I've been told she has some little dogs in the house also. But yeah, they're all big dogs. And they're not, I think if they got out, I know they've gotten out at my neighbor's house and gone after his chickens. But they've been outside before when I was out working on the snowmobile trail. And I thought they were going to attack me. And I don't go out there without a pistol because of that. So they're not, they're not real friendly dogs.
Hmm. That doesn't sound pleasant.
Do we have a, we have a nuisance ordinance, Phil?
I think we do.
And the police have gone up there. There's a, there was a dog officer that's gone up a few times and he was making some headway. But then when COVID hit, of course, it just, you know, all went by the wayside because of COVID.
Yeah.
So they were trying to do something. And like I said, Julie's, I talked to Julie the other day about it. I sent Bob an email.
Yeah. I got emails.
I, I sent it to the wrong person, I'm sorry. But it's just, it, it's, it's got to stop. It's terrible. I was sleeping upstairs. We had company over and God forbid I have company sleep upstairs now. They woke me up in the middle of the night in my bedroom. I can't hear because I have a couple of walls between me. But upstairs, they're right there. It's terrible.
Boy, that's a tough one.
Yeah.
It is.
But you'd think they'd have enough sensitivity. John, I mean, if it's bothering you, it's got to be bothering them.
I, I would, I don't know how the lady sleeps. I mean, the dogs ought to be barking all the time.
What is their comment about why the dogs bark all day?
I, I honestly don't know. I have never gone, I had, one of the police officers asked me one time, why don't you just go out and knock on the door? I said, no, that won't end well. Because she knows I've called a number of times that have come up there. Um, and I know the police, sometimes they don't get answers when they knock on the door. She won't answer the door. I know that, you know, she's got nothing.
So.
Go ahead.
Can I speak?
Yeah, go ahead, Julie.
Go ahead, Julie.
Okay, I wasn't sure if you heard me. Two things have happened since last week is, one, I have a meeting with the A C O on, I think it's next Tuesday. Is next Tuesday the first?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. Next Tuesday, I have a, a meeting set up to discuss things. When I briefly talk to them on the phone, especially because it's winter, there's a lot more arrows in the quiver that can be used to address this. Um, I did make Chief Lash aware of it again. And I, I think every time you hear them, as, as, and I know Dale, you probably don't want to do this because you know it's a strain on services at times. But every time there's an issue, you, you have to, you have to call the, the police.
Okay.
You just have to keep doing it because that's how we establish the record and can do something about it. And I also, um, in that meeting, I'm going to bring in Stan Watts, our code enforcement officer too, to see what can be done. And I also think, um, that combination between the police, the, the A C O and the code enforcement officer, we can get a lot further if they all work in conjunction to, to have some resolution to this.
Okay.
Are all the dogs out at once or is it like one at a time?
No, um, I think it varies. I think the majority of the time, there's a number of them out at once. Um, I think they have like doggy doors, they can come in and out. I'm not really sure. You know, I don't go up prowling around up there just because I don't want to be bothered.
Right.
But, um, I mean, that, that, those were, that was at least three or four dogs who were barking on that, that tape I had. Um, and sometimes it's even worse.
So I guess Julie's got it under control, so, so.
Is there anything we can do as a board, Julie?
I don't think so.
But you could, I, I, I'd like to talk to the A C O and, and see what their recommendations are. I'm sure this isn't the first time they've dealt with it in other places. So I think after I have a conversation, a more in-depth conversation with them, I'll be able to tell you what your options are more so and, and give us, give you guys and girls more information and then figure out how we can proceed from there.
Okay.
And Dale, I just want to say Dale's been very patient about this.
I'll say. Yep, not at home.
Do you know the house number?
Um, I don't. I know which house it is, but I don't know the number. It is, um, but.
We have that information in the office, Bob, I can forward it to you.
I mean, I've, I've made out an official complaint at the police office, police station, you know, lot before and of having come up a few times and stuff like. Like Julie says, I just know they got better things to do than chase after freaking dogs barking. You know, but I'll call them. I will do that.
Sorry.
All right, well, thank you for listening. I just wanted to bring up another step.
Wait, wait, before Dale leaves?
Yeah.
Hold him up. Don't let him go.
Okay. They, they got me cuffed.
I just wanted to, I, I wanted to give Dale a shout out. Dale was instrumental during our, when we were sort of helping the food pantry. He was instrumental in helping us set up our relationship that we have with Rennie's, which was one of the most generous businesses to the food pantry during the time that we were helping. And they continue to this day to be extremely generous. And Dale, I cannot tell you how many times Dale himself went and loaded up food and supplies for us. And I just wanted to publicly say how wonderful he was during that time and, and just thank him for all of his service, not just in the fire department, but everything he does for our community. He really is quite a special human.
Thank you.
Yep.
Rennie's makes it easy though.
Thank you, Dale.
Rennie's makes it easy. They're, they're easy to work with, so.
I, I have to tell you, they've been absolutely so generous with our community. And they're even helping again with our toy program and our coats and boots program. And they've just been absolutely wonderful.
Cool. If I just mentioned, I see the flags are down. When we met a couple of weeks ago, you were looking for volunteers within the department, the fire department, and I see they're all down. So good job.
Well, thanks. I actually had taken them down, I think Paul and Bill Bright did, most of them.
Okay.
Yeah, I saw a fallout on Sunday.
Well, cool.
Okay, well, thank you very much, everybody.
Yep.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Any other citizens' comments? Max?
No.
No? Okay.
Well, we do have Ruben in the audience.
Okay, I was gonna say, how's Ruben?
Old reliable. All right, uh, we'll move along to select board comments. Bob?
I have nothing to add tonight.
Okay. Colonel?
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
The only thing I have is the conservation committee is, is alive, well, and doing good things. Uh, you know, I haven't spoken with them personally, but I've seen some of their stuff on Facebook. It really looks good. It looks, we're gonna, we're gonna get good results from this crew.
Yep. Cool. Jan?
Well, now that you mention that, I didn't. But Karen Clark stopped by the other day and talked to me on my porch. And she was talking about what they've been doing at Marine Park and also how wonderful the new additions are to, to that committee. And that's Will and his sister Leslie. And she is delighted and, and she's doing, they're doing the, um, a trail. And Edward Fisher was the one who had the idea to do some of those. And so they're cleaning up a trail and they're naming it after, after him. And she, of course, was just delighted with that. So, yeah, good work.
You're here. Katie, do you have anything?
Just happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Okay. I guess we'll move right along. Town managers report. Julie?
So, I would keep it brief since I'm not there to regale you all. But I wanted to say thank you to the Ecumenical Church in Newcastle. They provided the food, Thanksgiving food baskets and today that were mostly picked up. Um, and that's a big, just such a big help to our residents. Also holiday baskets for the Christmas holiday. There's a sign up online for that. You can find the link on Facebook. You can also call the office. And that's going to be co-sponsored. It will be the town and the Lions Club is, um, we're going to do a joint effort to provide baskets. And next Sunday from three to six, this is a big event. We haven't done it like this before. We're having our big toy drive as, and it's been billed as Phila Cruiser. So between three and six at the town office next week, um, people can come and bring a new unwrapped toy and donate it. And if you bring a toy, um, the ladder truck will be set up much like it was on Halloween. And we will be sending down cocoa and, not cocoa made, obviously, but cocoa packets and marshmallows down through the snorkel. Um, and Santa Claus will be there to socially distance wave at children if they're in cars. And we're going to have several other characters joining us, so it should be a, a fun time. And it's just something that people can do in the evening, um, and support our toy program and still get the kids out so that they can see a first baby glimpse of Santa. So we're really excited. And it's not, this is coming Sunday, it's the sixth, December sixth, so.
Who's in charge of that? Are you in charge of it or?
Well, no. It's all the emergency services, actually. Justin Hills, um, he's going to be the point person on that. But it's a combined effort of the police, fire, and emergency medical services.
Okay.
And of course, the office staff will support. But we're really excited about this. Um, it's the first time we've ever done an event like this, especially with Phila Cruiser. It's, it will all be COVID safe. Well, everybody will be social distanced, but it's, it's still a way for the community to participate and feel part of something.
What was the time on that?
Three to six.
Thank you.
You all set?
And that's, I'm all set.
Okay. Moving along. Consent calendar. Somebody would, somebody like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So move.
Is second.
Okay. Any discussion? Any issues, Bob?
No.
Okay. Just checking, checking. Any issues, Katie?
No, all set, thanks.
Okay. So we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
My hand is raised.
I see it. Now.
You don't ask me if I have issues because you know I have issues all the time.
That's why I don't ask. All right. New business, request of new street, for its new street name. I believe that was B for you, Daryl?
Yeah. Um, one of the hats you wear is officially, it's a short sentence on our ordinances when it comes to nine one addressing. And basically you have the say on street naming. So back in May of twenty twenty, Ice Pond did a three lot subdivision as well as there was another lot there. They went ahead and got it approved. And on the plan, it's called Oak Point Lane. And they put them out on the market. They put in well, Septics developed, put the road in. There was a lot for three hundred, lot for three oh five, two for three hundred, actually. And then there was a three fifty and a three seventy-five. Both the three fifty and the three seventy-five are under contract. So they need to nail down the street addresses to get that finalized. Took it to Richard and Johnny on Oak Lane, Oak Point Lane, and we have an Oak Street. And they felt that was just too, too close that there could be confusion. Oak Street is in town. This would be Oak Point. Of course, he's already put up a sign. He's already done everything. Contracts were under Oak Point Lane, but it has not been approved by the board. So that's his number one choice, if you would approve Oak Point Lane for those lots that are on that down at Ice Pond. If that is a no-go, his next one was River Point, something to do with the river. We have a River Bend, which is up off thirty-two, but they felt River Bend and River Point, they should be different enough that it would be okay. So that's what I got.
This says Oak Point Way. Is that?
Yeah, on this it says Lane. He talked about Way.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I don't know where it came from.
Those lots are without a house on them, three hundred and something?
Three fifty, three seventy-five.
Holy mackerel. No house.
Well, Septics can drive.
Yeah, it was something I had just this year, so.
Yeah, well, yeah. Well, it's a good time to.
Everything is.
I still, I still kind of don't know why Oak Point and Oak Lane are two different.
Oak Street.
Oak Street. That's still quite a difference.
And Oak Point.
Yeah.
So you're suggesting Oak?
Uh, I, I'm not suggesting anything. I just want to see what everybody else thinks. I'm just throwing my opinion out there.
He did want to know if you'd do a new sign for him, if you. No, do.
Oh. So the sign is Lane, is that correct?
Oak Point Lane.
That's the sign, okay.
I haven't been down there. Have you seen it?
I'm okay with Oak Point Lane.
Is that going to confuse our emergency people?
It, it may. Um, there's only three houses down here. There's only two houses, I think, on Oak Street in town. It's off in Marble Avenue. There's just two houses, but, you know, if, if.
I would think Oak Street and Oak Point is.
It's not supposed to, but when you know you're dispatching and you get in your mind Oak Street or Oak, you hear Oak and you immediately go to Marble Avenue and find out you're in the wrong spot. But, um, with everybody.
Did he provide any choices that did not have a street that was already named?
The only other choice was he wanted something to do with the river, so River Point. It's always been known as the point. It's Pitcher's Cove, but we have a Pitcher's Road and we have a.
Yeah. Does the development have a name?
Does Ice Pond.
Ice Pond.
Ice Pond?
amended version of Ice Pond.
And?
Oak Point at Ice Pond.
Is there something in the river by that property that you could think of a road name for it? And maybe offer him a suggestion?
I mean, personally, I, I like Ice Pond North. And then you know you're going to Ice Pond. Just keep it the same. But they haven't chose, it's Point. It's the Point. The Ice Pond is, is over across the road and the other ones, so.
None of that's Ice Pond Point are correct? None of that, yep, in that development?
Apparently, he just said everything refers to Oak Point, right? There are Oaks there.
Yeah. We could say, we could do a cultural education thing here and just say, don't point road. No? I just.
What do you guys think? Personally, I, I think that.
Or Point Oak.
Oak, you know, Oak Point Road is different enough from Oak Street. I mean, how many things are named midomic in this area? You know? Uh, and there's only two. Oak Point Road and Oak Street. I don't have a problem with that. Jan?
I don't, I don't really have.
I like Point Oak.
Or pointed Oak?
Should be white oak or red oak.
Yeah.
Be real descriptive of the oak trees.
I believe they are red oaks out there too. I think that's what they are.
Point Oak, that way it's Point comes out first. So there, unless we have a street that has a point as the first.
That's, that's reasonable. Then he could take a sign, cut it in half and just.
Yeah. Super glue.
The purchaser would like to roll forward because, you know, he, he called and said, I need a street address. And I go, I can give you the number, but until the board approves the name, um, if we didn't move forward with subdivisions, hopefully he would come to you and then it would be on the plan and it would be settled.
Yep.
We hadn't had one so long.
He could do Point Oak with P O I N T E.
The sign is Oak Point. I think if you're going to stay Oak Point, just leave it, I, just the first sign.
The sign is up already?
What's the name of the owner? Who sold the property?
Doug Fitz.
What, what's the name of the guy who sold?
Douglas Fitz.
Spelling.
F I T T S. Douglas.
Are you even getting a road named after him?
Yeah.
So what's everybody's pleasure? Throw him a curve.
I'm neutral.
I, I don't have a strong.
I don't really have any.
As long as the emergency people are, are comfortable, I don't have a strong opinion.
Just my opinion, I think Oak Point shouldn't be an issue like the Colonel. It's, it's quite a bit of difference than Oak Street.
Yeah.
Street is in town, Point's on the river.
Exactly. Yeah, so. Would somebody like to make a motion on that?
It's Oak Point Lane, that's the.
Correct, correct.
Or Way. I don't know which way he's going, but either way.
I move to approve Oak Point Lane as the name of the street.
Is there a second?
Or Way. Or Way.
Yeah, either way.
He's got the sign up.
Either way.
Yeah. Good, good.
Is there a second?
All second.
Is there any more discussion? Here or none? All those in favor?
Thank you all.
My hand is raised.
Yep.
Okay.
Act on the ballot for the M R C Board of Directors election. Bob, I believe that would be you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm recommending that we, um, this is something they do every year. They're, they've got three open seats and they've got three people to fill them. We're only allowed to vote for one person. And I recommend if, if we're going to vote, that we vote for Sophie Wilson. Sophie's a town manager up in Oro. She's been on the M R C from, for a long time. She's a treasurer. She has an incredible amount of institutional knowledge to bring to table. And, um, the other two folks are great too, but I know they're going to get voted from other towns. So I, I would just recommend that we vote for Sophie.
Do you want to make that motion?
I'll move that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion on that?
All three of them are town managers.
Yep. Yep.
Huh.
And Kevin's been on there for a while, too.
Yeah.
Alyssa Downe is new, I think she's also on the MMA Executive Board, but I just thought it would be nice to give Sophie some support.
Yep.
Is there any more discussion? You all set, Katie?
Yep.
All those in favor?
My hand is raised.
unanimous, yep, I do, yep. Approval of CMP poles, locations. Would that, does that fall under Max?
That actually falls under John Dagel, and he approved the location of them, you just need to take official action.
Okay.
On Deco Street, I believe, on DeCros.
Yep. Would you like to make a motion, Bob?
Do we refer to the notification number to specify which ones we're approving?
You can, if you want, in your motion.
Why don't I just say, notification number ending in seven one one five, and I move approval of the notification number ending in nine five eight seven.
Is that your motion?
New pole locations, yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Here or none? All those in favor?
My hand is raised.
Five to zero. And whole business, do we have any, Max? Julie?
I just wanted to give you a quick update on Chapel Road.
Okay.
The CMP has put up the poles, they're just about done, make ready, CMP make ready is just about done, which is good. Consolidated will go next, and Charter's project manager has reached out to Consolidated to find out their schedule, and once Consolidated's make ready is done, we can move on to Spectrum Charter putting up their wires, so we're moving closer, ever so slowly, to Chapel Road getting wired.
Awesome.
Great. That's good.
Awesome.